All right, we're ready.
Kevin McSherry.
Jessica Penel.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of the July 15, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting.
I find it concerning just to notice because someone else left the minutes, it seems to appear that both Captain and I received it for that meeting, but we do not. That could be clarified if you can help me.
I can listen to the tape, the recording.
It's just the written minutes next to seeing the alternates.
Yep.
It lists our names and our names are not listed in the vocal.
Okay, oh, maybe that's what happened. Okay, I'll try.
All in favor, I oppose to abstain motion here. I'll make a motion to approve the next voice received from Alren Sage in voicemail number 11472603 dated July 10, 2025 in the amount of $520 for professional services rendered. All in favor?
I've been billing the applicant on this. If you want to hold on on this, you know, this is the applicant. Or do you want to pay it in reverse or? What's the number? Well, you and I discussed.
Yeah.
I did it last night when the applicant was filing it in. How do you want to do it?
Okay, I'll make a motion to double the applicant.
What lengths does it? So you and I discussed this, so.
Element of motion to have the applicant pay this invoice from Alren Sage number 11472603 in the amount of $520. All in favor, I oppose to abstain motion here. We have our invited guest tonight, Savannah Nicole, the community planning director of the OCSR. Dallas, the elements in her role she provides technical planning zoning and housing assistance to 19 municipalities in Dallas, including Oxford, NVCO, and Savannah's pity, just as just to the town with the creation of our upcoming affordable housing plan. Savannah Nicole is American Planning Association's AICP certified by the primer and ACIO certified administrative zoning technician. She has been in the county almost four years and has previously served as the assistant town planner on the city's very infield and town planner in Seymour and Beatty Falls. She holds a bachelor of arts in sociology and urban and community studies from UConn, a master of arts in urban and environmental policy applied from the Tufts University, and a rising third year law student at the University of Connecticut School of Law. She received an award this year from UConn Law for her studies in land use and housing. Savannah Nicole is related to pieces of land use, housing, and comprehensive planning. Her professional passions, sports, informed decision making, or efforts such as the ones she appeared to discuss with us today. With that, I would hand off to Savannah Nicole to give us an introduction to the topic.
Thank you, Chairman. Can you hear me okay? Can you all hear me well? Okay, perfect. So everyone has this presentation that we're going to run through today, the audience does as well. I'll communicate as we're shifting through the pages so that we can travel together. But thank you, Chair for Coachella, for such a kind introduction. As I mentioned, my name is Savannah Nicole DiAlba. You can call me S N, I'm Savannah Nicole. And I'm the community planning director at NVCO. I appreciate the Oxford Planning and Zoning Commission taking time to discuss how we use zoning to encourage housing development with us today. This can be done through a variety of tools such as a planned residential development regulation, which we'll discuss more in depth later. So we're going to head to the next slide, the overview. By the end of tonight's discussion, you'll have a better understanding of who we are at NVCO, how planning and zoning commissions can use zoning to encourage housing development, and what NVCO's technical assistance process looks like. We know we're here before you today to show you what it could be like if we were to partner together. So we won't get too far into the weeds unless you have questions, but we want to show you what our relationship could look like. There will be dedicated time at the end for questions. But if you have a question throughout the presentation, please feel free to stop me. I'm comfortable answering them at any point in the conversation. So we'll go to the next slide. It's the who is NVCO. This is what I'm obliged to do, and not everyone knows who NVCO is, so I think it's a good way just to share who we are and what we do. The Nagertuck Valley Council of Governments, also known as NVCO, is a voluntary association of 19 municipalities in West Central Connecticut. We are a state-designated regional planning organization and a federally designated metropolitan planning organization, which is just a fancy way of saying that we support our members on transportation, environment, housing, land use, planning, and implementation efforts. Over the last year, NVCO has assisted with Tom Oxford in a variety of ways, including the creation of the draft Affordable Housing Plan. We helped support resource sharing after the August 2024 flood. We've worked on drainage for the firehouse, and we've done transportation improvements on Chestnut Tree Hill Road. Just to give different ways in which we interacted in the Oxford community. Our board consists of the 19 chief elected officials of the communities that we serve that are shown on the map to the right of the slide. First Electman Temple is your representative on our board. I like to clarify who we serve by how we differ from the town. As a resident, a property owner, a business owner, you are Oxford's constituent. And your town works closely with you when making decisions about what policies to implement, how to spend money, and how to govern the town of Oxford community. But as a council of governments, Oxford is our constituent. So we work really closely with First Electman Temple when making decisions about policies, plans, and initiatives that we conduct at that regional level. While our work has direct effects on all of you as residents of Oxford, First Electman Temple is your representative at our level of the organization. But this shifts when we work on a specific project in a community. So just like when we worked on the Affordable Housing Plan, we, your first selectmen, can identify either a chairman or a staff member that we'll work closely with alongside a commission. We had some lovely commissioners that we got to work with on your draft Affordable Housing Plan. But when we work directly with you on a project, we work with you. We, as long as your chief elected officials are okay with it, the process is less segmented. All right, so we're going to go to the next slide, and it is regulatory land use tools. So there are two primary ways that you, as the Planning and Zoning Commission, can encourage housing development. The first tool is planning on the left side of the presentation. Oxford's authority to plan comes from Chapter 126 of the General Statutes. This can be done through modifying the town's subdivision regulations or updating the plan of conservation and development. While planning tools are not the focus of today's conversation, I always like to present as holistic of a picture as I can. But the focus of today is zoning. And so zoning, your ability to zone, comes from Chapter 124 of the General Statutes. And regulatory changes that use zoning that occur in your zoning regulations can take a variety of forms, which we'll talk about tonight. But before we talk about those specific tools, we're going to zone out and look at zoning briefly at an introductory level before we head in onto the alternate tools. Right, so now we're looking at a map you all are very familiar with. So traditional zoning techniques became popular at the beginning of the 20th century. In 1926, the United States Supreme Court held in Village of Euclid versus Ambler Realty Co. That's that picture on the top right. I'm a little bit of a planning history nerd, so I like to show when possible. But the Supreme Court held that the suppression of uses among zoning districts accomplished a legitimate public purpose. We're not going to go further into the reasoning today. But the key takeaway is that's that traditional form of zoning, and it's called Euclidian zoning. It's not after map, it's after that case. And that's what most communities in Connecticut do to regulate zoning. A community establishes zoning districts, which you guys have done, shown on a zoning map, and then you define the allowed uses in rezoning regulations. And each zone or specific use within a zone in certain instances have specific area and bulk requirements to define the form of the use, including the height of the building, the setbacks from the property lines, undifferent characteristics that really shape what the town of Oxford does. So now we're going to go to the next slide. While municipalities in Connecticut have used alternative zoning techniques for decades, they were explicitly codified in Public Act Number 2129 when it revised the zoning labeling act. This is directed from Chapter 124, Section 8-2, just showing that we've been doing it for a while, these different tools. But the state finally said, let's just make it super clear that you, as a municipality, have the power to do so. And the three main ones, as you can see at that bottom highlight, for alternative zoning techniques are floating zones, overlay zones, and planned development districts. No, you keep those four ones. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. We're on the first page that shows this schema. So the commissioners who've worked with me before know that I'm auditory and visual, so I always like to show things in different ways. So we just want to summarize quickly how we got where we are on the diagram you can see on the right. There are many types of land use tools. The main ones are the planning tools and the zoning tools. We're not talking about the planning tools today. But when we think about zoning, there's traditional zoning and then alternative zoning techniques. And we're now going to talk through three types of them: the floating zones, the overlay zones, and then the planned development districts. So for floating zones, a floating zone is a zoning district that is written into the zoning regulations without being tied to specific parcels. The commission will create zoning regulations that establish what forms, type, size, form, for structures, and then uses that are allowed in that floating zone. A parcel becomes part of that zone when an applicant meets the conditions established in the regulations. So when you've made these regulations, an applicant comes, that's when the zone lands on that parcel. I gave the commission, and it's available online, there's a handy O L R research report from 2006 that goes into a little more detail and provides some of the statutory citations. But it defines the two-step process as follows. You, as a commission, would adopt floating zone regulations that don't apply to a particular property would set those uses and form requirements. Then the second step would be that an applicant would come to you with a zone change application that met their criteria for that zoning district that we created. It is at that step that the zone is changed and the particular project is approved. And often, the zone change in this specific project get approved at that same date. Head on to the next one. So now we'll talk about overlay zones. And a key difference between an overlay zone and a floating zone is that a floating zone can be anywhere in a municipality where an overlay zone is defined to a specific geography. I think the easiest way to think about this is your aquifer protection area is an overlay zone. It's a set area in your community. You know where it lands. It's kind of hard to see on the map, but it is visible on the map in the presentation. You have them at your boundary with Seymour on both sides, so your southeastern and southwestern boundaries of Seymour. But that's, that's an overlay. And you can also sometimes see overlays in communities when they're setting up transitional zones. So think about where commercial and residential meet, they might make it overlay that allows for some higher density uses that lent the transition from commercial to residential in a senior way. An overlay zone is a district that's applied over a previously established zoning district, and they often set additional standards for parcels within a zone. So a property owner can continue to be subject to the underlying zone unless they apply for a permit to do something that triggers the requirements of the overlay zone. If you are restrictive as the aquifer protection areas, if someone's coming to you for those 28 uses, we can't do them. Or it can be more permissive, as in when we're talking about the transitionary zones. We want to allow this otherwise, but we're okay with higher density at those places where some of our zones buffer. So you're, you're either making the regulations stricter or more flexible in certain geographic areas. So we'll now go to the, the last one, the planned development districts. A planned development district is a zoning district that allows a municipality and a developer to negotiate standards for a development that might not fit into existing regulations. A court case clarified that a planned development district is like a floating zone in that they alters the zone's boundaries of a specific area by carving out a new zone from an existing one, which is a lot of jargon. I think that the, the key difference is that's in that O L R summary is that while floating zone regulations are first created and then a project is approved, in a planned development district, the amendment and the approval of the project often happen as one step. So you're working in closer collaboration with the developer than you might in a floating zone process. Deciding on which tool to use is just as much of a legal question as it is a zoning question. But luckily for us, we don't need to focus on specifically if it's going to be a planned development district or it's a planned residential district or an overlay or floating zone at this point. There are other elements of a regulation that encourages more flexible housing development. I'm going to move it to from the spunky page now, I'll tell you. So the purpose is in the process. What is the goal of the new zone? What processes will applicants follow to utilize the zone? That's kind of teasing out the nuance between the floating zone and the planned development district. Are you working together from the start, or are you, as the commission, setting the reg and then the applicant coming to you? You need to think about the uses. Are you trying to encourage a specific type of tenure? Do you want to see rental or homeownership units? Is there going to be an affordability requirement? Are you interested in mixed-use development? Utilities and safety, because it matters. Are you going to require that the parcel have sewer and water? Are you going to be, are, will community septic be acceptable? What's required for circulation, access, and address? What soil erosion controls will you be seeking? And then those area and bulk, as we were talking about, it's the minimum lot size, it's the max lot. How is that going to influence density? What are the setback requirements? Is there a minimum square footage for these structures? And then some of the ones, are you going to require open space? Are you going to require there be shared spaces built, playgrounds, community centers, things of that nature, depending on what you're trying to build? Those are kind of sprinkles on the ice cream. But you need to consider these factors just as much, if not it's equal, to the what type of legal process you're going to establish. Because that's how you create the regulation. And a good regulation is one that's supported by the commission that's ultimately going to have to enforce it. So when you work through this process, you'll want to consider these factors as you're building your regulation. And creating a regulation from scratch takes time, and it takes commitment from a commission. Should the town want to work with NVCO on the regulation? We have a recommended process that we would work through with you. This is by level, and there's room to modify our process, but it's kind of how we function through these sorts of efforts. Is that we would start by ensuring our staff understand the town and the commission's goals. They're not always the same, and so it's important to be sure we understand the whole picture. That would be conversations with you, with your legislative body. And then also just reviewing your zoning regulations to see what you currently have, seeing how this relates to your plan of conservation and development. We wrote your affordable housing plan, so we were aware of it, but we, we touched that document to be sure that we, we see your goals. We then would facilitate discussions on the elements of the draft regulation. And when I say that, I mean these chunks here. They're all puzzle pieces that you need to think about as a commission as you're building out this regulation. That's really the phase two, is the largest phase of the work. We'll work as your subject matter experts and your facilitators to build manageable chunks that we'll discuss with you at regularly scheduled meetings. We work with you to make sure we understood your directive on how you wanted those elements to shape up. We would draft regulations, and then we'd come back to you to make sure that we're drafting the regulation in the way that you envisioned it. Once we had a regulation that you felt good about, it could take us a little bit of time, we'd be working through it. We then would want a ground truth by taking it to your trusted stakeholders for feedback. In some communities, the town attorneys heavily involved in processes, and others, this is where they're coming into the process where the commission's saying, hey, we drafted this, what does this look like? Is this above bar? Would this pass legal guest out? But I also think that it could be developers you trust in your community. It can be attorneys that have come before your board. It really would be up to the commission to decide who you wanted to bring into that sort of not public hearing space, but trying to get to the regulation. And so you can see that there's an iterative process here that if you get feedback, you may decide you want to incorporate it into your draft regulation. But that's a commission decision, and we won't know if there really is a phase four until we see the feedback you receive. We all want to hear it's a perfect regulation, but sometimes we do see what a commission seeks isn't always consistent with what is actually happening in the market. And that's why I really like to bring in those trusted stakeholders, those developers that say, yeah, this is great, but that setback's not going to work, or that's not a big enough parcel, or whatever it may be. And then once you've had that regulation, we iterated, you then do the things you do all the time with the notice, the public hearing, the adoption, with the goal of having a regulation that everyone's proud of, everyone really understands, and you feel comfortable and confident adopting. And just to add to that last point, when you work with any consultant, anyone would be wonderful at this process. I just want to note that NVCO works with you from start to finish, but because we're your council of government, we don't disappear. We're here and we come often and whenever requested. So it's a relationship that we like to be a part of, but just know that when we work on a project with you, there's no, okay, we're done, you can't call us. If it's not working, we pick up the phone, we'd want to work with you for six months, you know what I mean? We, we really care about making sure what we create, what we facilitate, does what it was meant to do for our community. So just to provide a little context now outside of how we would do the process. Again, I really thank you for talking to, to speak with us today about what we would do and kind of at high level, what's, what tools do you have at your exposure? But should you decide as a planning and zoning commission that you want to work with the Nagertuck Valley Council of Governments, we get the requests from your first selectmen. And that happens in every community differently. Sometimes the Planning and Zoning Commission makes the recommendations of the legislative body. How you get that recommendation to us, it comes through your chief elected. From there, we often engage in discussions with your chief elected about the draft scope, the contract, the cost. So having a good idea of what you're looking for for us is really important when it's going through chief elected so we can really make a scope that aligns with what you look for. The town and the organization agree on the scope, the contract, and the cost. And once all that administrative stuff is done, we begin the work, which is really fun part of the process. I didn't want to go too far, too deep into anything today, and I appreciate you entertaining my nerdiness on planning and zoning. But does anyone have any questions that can answer for you today?
How many towns in this district has the council of governments helped draft these kind of regulations?
Yes, so we have helped a variety of communities in the region on smaller types of projects. So for an example, I'm working with the Borough of Nagertuck on the opening smoke shop regulations. We've helped a variety of communities on some of the more defined scopes. We want to do this, can you give us an explanation? This is the first broad kind of endeavor that we would get into, but it most certainly is in our expertise in wheelhouse to do this work in. We've worked with Nagertuck, we've worked with Thomason, Watertown. We helped Southbury from time to time, we've helped Cheshire. So many of the communities in our region have used us for this service.
Thank you, the council.
Yeah.
Let me go in a little bit.
Yeah.
I was doing some web research and looking at some of the towns and what they've done, when they've developed PDD, particularly towns in Connecticut, a little bit outside of Connecticut, and I felt matched what Oxford's goal should be in terms of its overall character. Can you talk to me a little bit about clustering or cluster development? And just as a way to develop what would be potentially some responsible housing, are you familiar with it?
Yes, yeah, so I'm going to, I'm happy we did the, again, I said it's visual. This kind of showing of the work is that when you're talking about cluster, there's many ways of thinking about cluster subdivisions or cluster development. And so we would want to have a conversation with you about what you were really trying to do because the statute enables cluster subdivision regs, which is a process that many communities have done. That's more for when you're trying to actually create lots, smaller lots within. That's a really bad picture, but I'm trying to draw for you. But this could be a work, open space that you require through the cluster subdivision regulations. And these could be tinier lots than Oxford traditionally allows through your subdivision regulations. And maybe this is your road, and there's a pond here because Oxford's wet. I call you a sponge, you're my favorite sponge, but you've got a lot of, a lot of water. But if you were trying to create lots, I would recommend a cluster subdivision regulation over a cluster zoning regulation. If you were, wanted them all to be on the same parcel, common ownership, like those are the types of questions we'd get into with these sorts of processes. That's also a viable way to do it through zoning, but there are questions I would tease out if you work with us to better understand which one you wanted.
It's also a way to grow your housing, increase certain, if there's a more way this is our here.
Yeah, and to protect the open space matters to a town. So it's, it's a valid way to do it, and it's a, a process that's tried and true, that's been done before, that we, we're confident we could work with you here.
Can I have a more? Okay, and this has come up, and I've heard conflicting answers to this. So can we, as part of the level of the PDD, require a traffic impact study or an infrastructure adequacy report? To just tie that up to rural schools, or is it ever mixed? Answer for that.
Yeah, so the thing that makes it, I'm not going to give you a super direct answer, so I'm just going to set the expectation from the start here. A big issue with traffic is when it's not a state, when it's on a state road, you, as a commission, are really limited on the power that you have to deny an application because of that. you as a commission are really limited on the power that you have to deny an application because of that.
That's true.
Yeah, because it's, when it's a state road, it's not your, the state sees it as not your impact. I understand that that's not what it is like in practice, because you need to go on local roads to get to your state road. And many people take 67, but they're going up to get to Beacon Falls, up the beautiful hill, or they're, you know what I mean? I understand the concern there, but when it's a state road, you can't deny an application based on those traffic impacts. So one thing I left off in the conversation of those like little jelly beans is that we'd want to look at area where you actually want to see these things. And so if you were looking at town roads, I would do more research for you to definitively figure out. We'd want to work with your town attorney to make sure we did it in a legal way. But traffic makes sense and it's legal and above bar when it's Oxford's, when it's 67, when it's not your road. See why it's a little roundabout there, but I will say this. Yeah, but I'll add this as well is that you as a commission, it was enabled in 2023 explicitly that you could set in your regulations requirements for when a developer comes to you that they have to pay for a technical expert to check their work. And so you have power to request different types of reports to ensure that what's happening is within the bounds of the threshold you're setting. But those are the other types of things, if that's a concern, we can build into your regulation, either for this regulation or broader into regulations so that you weren't just getting a report from a developer that said, yeah, trust this, you have it in your power to say, okay, well, we want to enact this section of our regulations so that there's a peer review of it. And that's on the developer. So there's ways we can do that. And then I'll just briefly touch your school enrollment point. We did a webinar at NVCOG about it. It's, I understand that Oxford's, not all school districts are the same, but it's not, I'm a actual numbers perspective, as big of a concern as it seems. And we know how to do that research to actually work with your board of education to see like where, they know where your developments are, they know how many children are coming from them. So if that was a concern, we have the technical expertise to help validate if that's true for Oxford or if that isn't true for Oxford. There is some case study that says a commission can't deny an application because of that, but we're not there yet. We don't know, you know what I mean, there's steps before. Yeah, 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 no, I can also share the webinar with Jessica and Jeremy Puccarella to share with the commission. It was done by the only planner in Connecticut with a PhD. So I listened to him, but we can, you know, we can come back and talk about what we liked or didn't like in this town.
Yeah.
I don't know how many have them, but I do know Shelton has a lot of PDDs. It's a common tool that's used. Okay, Thomas is here. It's within his expertise, so we do see them within the lower valley creations of often his work. So that's something we can look into as well. In your package, the audience doesn't have them, but I provided you with two sets of draft examples. Should you work with us and say, you know, the PDD is the direction we want to go? We would give you more detailed information, we'd give you additional examples, we'd show you from the conversation about your goals, hey, we really like this section of Melbury, we really like this section of Oakdale. We went through our jelly beans of aspects of the regulation, and we built something that's Oxford's.
A couple of questions, thank you, you made a very clear explanation. You spoke about our affordable housing plan in the past, has it been completed yet? Has it stayed out beyond?
No, so there's an affordable housing committee meeting on Monday, August 11. We are going to be unveiling the draft plan at that point. It's totally up to the commission whether they then recommend it out to the legislative body. But we're, it's been a really wonderful process working with Commissioner Peddell and Commissioner Pete and Commissioner Pat. And so we just, I thank them for that, but it's, we're getting to the end, so it's time for a new. Yes. Yes, my apologies, your Affordable Housing Plan Committee, not the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you, Jeremy.
And then just had a secondary question. On your slide that showed.
I'm sorry they're not labeled, I couldn't get the.
Or a sophisticated process, we understand some of the people. And you mentioned to the depth where you would take a book on Affordable Housing Plan and POCD. At this point, our POCD is up for revision.
It's 28.
Right, is it possible to, how difficult is it to work on this particular project when that is also still potentially the unfluss?
I wouldn't say it's difficult. We would, so we often like to make sure this process is clear and transparent to the public. So if we were to do something like this, we'd write you a memo that articulates what we've got, what we distilled from your plan of conservation and development, what we distilled from your affordable housing plan, what we distilled from what other relevant document you directed us towards. And what's in there may not be totally relevant to the commission as we need to make conversation, but that's really ground truth. Oh, you sent this in your 2017 POCD, we think our policy is heading more in this direction. It doesn't change your POCD, but we can still draft the regulation based on what you see today. We just want to root it in what you've done and what you improved. So that even could be a really beneficial conversation of how has your policies, your goals around housing changed since then? But we wouldn't, we wouldn't touch or amend your POCD.
Samantha, just to push your Swan's point about the traffic studies and the reports. Most of the regulations do require the study to be done. I think you were explaining that it's discounted a little bit when it's on a state road. But the internal workings of the other roads in Oxford and having driven on many of the internal roads in Oxford, those would still be part of any traffic or expert traffic report study. Having just witnessed one being presented in Waterbury, the traffic engineer was discussing that if it's not 100 units or more, the state of Connecticut really doesn't look at it as a heavy traffic generator. But in the context of that same presentation, all the neighborhood streets were concerned about cut-through traffic and all things like that. So I think the traffic study would be important and imperative to listen to. It may not be the only reason to deny an application, but it certainly would be an important consideration for safety purposes.
Yes, most definitely. And I think that's where like thinking about level of service matters in this conversation. And that's where I really like the piece of the statute that now allows you as a commission to get someone to check, to peer review an applicant, is that you would hope an engineer wouldn't lie, but to know that that level of service isn't going to decrease is where a commission needs sometimes to make that decision. If someone's coming to you and your level of service is decreasing because of these projects, that's a viable, that's a legitimate concern that your commission may have. It's an impact on your roads, there are emergency concerns that could come along with that. But it, on its own, as your town attorney said, yeah, it doesn't, the state's not, the state doesn't let that happen anymore.
Commissioner Swan mentioned cluster housing, but another consideration is high density, partly complexes for affordable housing. With those needs, several PDD regulations, or can they be covered under, you know, can lots of things be covered under one regulation?
So this is where, from like a planner's perspective, I really like to bring in GIS into these conversations in the sense that you may say for cluster subdivisions, you're comfortable with it being on community sector or in certain areas of town, would you wouldn't be comfortable seeing high density apartment rental units? And so if you, the geographies didn't overlap, whether it be because of utilities, whether it be because of you want to keep it on 67, you want it near the airport, I mean, whatever those goals are, we'd really want to look at where you wanted to see these uses. And if there was no overlap between them, I wouldn't recommend the same regulation because what you're considering when you're looking at high density residential development or medium density or whatever that looks like in Oxford, your setbacks could be different, your parking requirements could be different. But if you were trying to do, as you can see, I'm a very, I'm a mover, I'm a visual person, but if you're trying to do two separate things, we would be able to better understand that when we talked about your goals. And I'm very lucky that NVCOG usually gives me space where if you wanted both regs. I can't get away with it, I'm in trouble, but you'll find me later, you'll help me, but yeah. So I don't want to say yes until I really understood what you were seeking and where you were seeking. Because the goal is, you have regulations as a commission. When someone comes, when an applicant comes, you know that regulation is at the back of your hand and you wrote it, you're confident in it. And yeah.
Yeah, it gets just kind of talking about more of the, yeah, the structure of how this all works. I have kind of in my mind how this works. Essentially, when you're driving, when you're driving the PDD, really driving the rules around here, right? And what we sort of highly respect, and we, we're identifying with parts which we try to follow. One, the policy of, that's kind of that whole of a scenario a lot of, right? It's at the point in which a development goes in and says, yes, I want to develop on this actual, like, part of regulations specific to that property. And it's a lot of, which is sort of the guidance of that, where am I?
I'd say so, and I think like that's a key difference between, and again, the terminology, there's so much terminology in this work that it's really easy to think you're saying the same thing and get cross. So that's why I appreciate you all speaking with me in the presentation, but I like to be sure we're all on the same place. What is said in the Connecticut Public Series and people at OLR is a PDD is more of a collaborative process with the developers coming to you and you're making that reg. And that's one process of here's the regulation and here's where we're landing it versus the floating zone where it's commission-led, it's town-led. And it sounds like you're more interested in the latter process of you want to set the lay of the land, you want to decide where it's possible so that when a developer comes to you, you're not taking what they've made and then saying, yes, we're going to allow it here. You're trying to encourage developers to go to those places where you allow the cluster subdivision, where you allow the higher middle density residential development. And you are leading that process and it'll be clear to those developers because your regulations change. Your zoning map changes, your zoning regulations change. And that's also why I build in this like ground truthing phase is that so many well-intentioned commissions build regulations that they get really, really attached to, and then they put it out and they never talk to the attorneys that do work in their region, or they never talk to a developer. And then the first developer comes in and says, this is unworkable. And so we'd want to work with you first to get your catalog, this is what we want. And then we check to say, you know, I mean, teams might say this isn't possible, or EG Homes might say, I can't build on that size lot. So how responsive you want it to be to your developers is a policy choice you've got to make. But I like to try to build some reality into these processes, which is why that background truthing phase is there as well.
Is there a sort of middle ground where we sort of say, to use your analogy, the rules of the road, where we say, this is our idea of a floating zone, but we are willing to work with what the specifics want to show us your plan, and then we'll talk about whether or not your specifics fit into our vision. Is there that medium where they come in knowing that, okay, they're not going to tolerate anything before stories, but I can do these other things for that, so I mean.
Yeah, there's, so I've seen in practice when I was the assistant plan in St. Mary's that there are regulations, they're often more for commercial or mixed use where there's like flexibility for a developer to come in with a master plan of this is what I'm trying to do. But if that was the direction the commission was trying to head, where you wanted more flexibility, that's where, if I know you're interested in cluster subdivisions, high, high-density residential, and then seeing how to implement flexibility into processes, I come back to you with another funky packet with a different date with those draft rights, with my recommendations. But everything I bring you is just, it's just technical assistance. You make the decisions, but as Jeremy Puccarella said, what matters to me in these processes is informed decision-making. So I do my job right when you understand what I've put in front of you and you make the decision as a group. My job is to draft and work with town staff and your town attorney to make sure it's legal and above bar. But you set the process and I collect the resources you need to do that process in a way that feels good.
I just have a quick question. I guess, I don't know if it's a question or a statement, but I'm thinking, trying to think what I want to say. And I see Dominic sitting over there and thinking about Shelton. And when I went and researched Shelton, it wasn't like one PDD. It was like 20, or, or, okay, thank you. Like, I feel like that is kind of, it's, when you take what we have in Oxford and then you, you go, you know, none of these regulations fit what I want to do. So I'm, the catalyst is usually the attorney. And I feel like that's almost like, I think, why I feel uncomfortable about the whole thing. Because it's not the commission saying, oh, you know what, we have this really great idea and we can do this. It's like we're, we're reacting to this. I personally, still, a PDD makes me very uncomfortable because I saw that once there was one, there was 111? Okay, so in Oxford, I, we just had a new open space. Christine from NVCOG did our open space map again, it looks beautiful. We have in the teens of open space left. And like, so I'm just, I don't know, I guess I just, it makes me uncomfortable.
If I may through the chair, I think that's a valid concern. And that's where, what I was saying earlier to Commissioner Puchard, that like I bring GIS into my work where if you went through the PDD process and you set that minimum lot size, I'm going to come back to you with a map that shows you how many parcels in Oxford would be able to do that. And so like we tinker with the range, one acre is probably a lot of your parcels. 15 acres is probably a lot less of them. And then we can look at where those parcels are, and if there is, you'll see in the affordable housing plan, some of your permissions. I call different areas of your town a boot, jelly bean, and I think I forgot something else, but a peanut. And so we'll look and we'll see, I'll come to you with your boot, your jelly bean and your peanut. And you'll decide if they make sense for where you're trying to build. They may not, but that's, I think that's what we do as planners with our technical assistants is I come at it from a different perspective than the legal perspective, but you need that. And that's where we collaborate and work together is that I'm helping you tinker and I'm working with you to prompt you so that we're thinking about the elements. And then we get something that you like and you feel comfortable with. And then the attorney's the one who's giving us the green light because he's the one that's going to defend you when, if and when something happens. And so it's, it's truly a collaborative process that gets us through. And your staff know your commission, your commission and you're better than anyone. So it's kind of a triptych of how do we make sure you're happy, you like it, you're proud of what you're creating? I'm just one piece of that.
Can it start off as an intention for a PDD and then just turn into like another regulation?
Yeah, and I think that's why.
I mean, if the commission is drafting it and they find, or however, can they start off in thinking, this is what we want to do? And then possibly say, you know what, no, maybe we want to just make a new zoning regulation that addresses a certain thing, something.
And that's why, so the commission is aware, anytime I come before a commission, I speak to the staff or I speak to the chairman, because I try to be as polished as possible in these processes. But that's why. But that's why through the conversations we had, I originally was just going to come to talk about the differences between a planned development district and a planned residential district. But we pivoted a little and that's why you have this framework that's showing you the floating zone, the overlay and the planned development. That's just one way to get there and to the informed decision-making point. You may decide that the PDD is not the path you want to take. You might go home, because I know this is interesting, so you're going to be thinking about it. You're going to drink your coffee in the morning and inspiration might strike. And that's why you all have my business card as well. But you may all agree, if you decide to work with NVCOG and you come back to the table, we all like the floating zone. Okay, we had done that pad. And that's where in the presentation, I only verbally said it, but I think what you make is important. But that's where we speak to your attorney about what's really the process where we need to go through when we're deciding what it's called. What's in it is what you're really using us for. And that's a conversation we're facilitating where your attorney knows what, what we really need to call it so that when a developer comes and if it doesn't go in a way, if it ends up in court, you're the one that's got, you want something you feel good defending.
Anything else? Anything else? Okay, I have one technical question.
I will. I can make a packet that also does a zip folder to Jessica and Shaw. Yes. If you have my notes, though.